This time I'd like to call to order the Monday, October 1st meeting of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners. At 6:00 PM we had a work session with the Whalehead Trust who gave us an update on Heritage Park and plans moving forward. This time, I'd like to ask retired Reverend Glenn McCraney if he would lead us in the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Does that mean old? Let us pray. God of grace and God of glory, pour out your power as we gather here tonight. We come before you and always give you honor and praise. We thank you for the opportunity and freedom to gather on this night. We pray for your hand of blessings on this meeting. Guide and direct our gathered assembly, so that it's full of wisdom, productivity, and respect for one another. We thank you for those who plan and will guide the activities of this meeting. Grant unto them wisdom, vision of purpose, encourage to confront and fulfill the plans for the betterment of our Currituck County. We thank you today for our lives and we pray you will continue to sustain us each day. Accept our prayers and praise, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Gulliam. At this time, the next item is approval of agenda. Do we have any additions or deletions? I'm not aware of.
We do not.
I make a motion for approval.
I have a motion for approval.
Second.
Second. Any further comment? Hearing done, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Next item is public comment. We have several people signed up tonight. First is Ms. Mary Etheridge. And please give your name and address for the records. Thank you.
My name is Mary Etheridge and I live at 846 Shawboro Road. My family and I have been involved in litigations with Currituck County since 2011 over illegal spot zoning in our neighborhood. At that time, Mr. Griggs and Mr. McCord were not serving on the board and Mr. Martin was the only commissioner voting against allowing a junkyard to be located in our neighborhood. How ironic that at the commissioners' meeting last month, Mrs. Snowden and the Director of Tourism spoke concerning the Civil War encampment and tourism in Currituck County. But the commissioners on December the 5th, 2011 disregarded a letter from the Administrator of the North Carolina Cultural Resource Department concerning a junkyard being located so close to a pre-Civil War home, the twin home that is listed in the National Registry of Historic Places. How ironic, at the same meeting, Rachel's Ranch was not approved because it did not meet the requirements and was not in harmony with the characteristics of the surrounding properties, but a junkyard in Shawboro was. How ironic that not one entity in the county, the planning board, the planning staff, or anyone thought a junkyard in Shawboro was a good idea, but six county commissioners decided it was and voted to approve it against everyone's recommendations. And the Superior Court of Currituck County told them they were wrong also. How ironic that I can quote one commissioner after another that voiced in their, the concerns over the quality of projects put in communities, but they found a junkyard a quality project in my neighborhood. How ironic that the applicant has withdrawn his special use permit in February of this year, but the commissioners decided to spend taxpayers' money fighting our win at the Court of Appeals over the special use permit. How ironic that Chairman O'Neill states that if someone meets the requirements, that they certainly have the right for an affirmative vote, but what happens when they read absolutely none of these requirements? I can tell you what can happen, and it can happen to anyone in this county. They can approve it. As one commissioner stated at a meeting, "We do not have to follow staff or anyone's recommendations. We can do whatever we want." I pray this will never happen again to another citizen of Currituck County. And hopefully, one day, the commissioners will do the right thing and try to make a wrong right. This is all I've ever been asking for, to be treated fairly when an injustice has been done. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have one quick question. Did we appeal because we lost?
No, the board determined that upon the plaintiffs' appeal challenging the court's denial of attorney fees to them, that the county would at the same time appeal and ask the court to look at its determination that the spot zoning was illegal spot zoning. I mean, so that, basically, the county has a cross appeal, asking the court to look at what the Superior Court did, just as the plaintiffs have an appeal, asking the Superior, asking the appellate court to look at what the Superior Court did relative to attorney fees.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. O'Neill.
Yes, sir.
I'm going out on a limb here, but we've got a list of 28 people that signed up to speak that night in favor of what we did. Twenty-eight people, and they're all your neighbors. And I'll give you the copy of the list. We didn't, we had 28 people speak in favor of it, so that's on the list.
That was at the, the community's public meeting?
That was at the community meeting that was, that was held by the applicant as required by the Unified Development Ordinance.
Right. Okay, thank you. Next is Ms. June Raffa.
We'll be having the video again.
I think she, she has it loaded. There it is.
Okay. Hello again, I'm June Raffa and I live on Reggie Owens Drive in Harbinger. As you can see from the latest pictorial representation, I think it would be fair to say that Lower Currituck might be referred to as a repository. Not counting the mobile units, semi-trailers, or completion of the latest addition of Storage City, there is an excess of 1,500 storage units in the lower part of our county. I was unable to get an exact total as some telephone respondents were reluctant of disclosure. Could any business, other than our existing multiple storage facilities, be a violation of spot zoning? County commissioners are community leaders and policymakers who establish a vision for the county. You are elected to set policies, goals, and objectives to direct county growth and development. Again, I ask, what is that vision? Some of you can state this didn't happen on my watch. As the county moves forward, please honor your stewardship. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Woody, could you comment on any of, I know we've got this huge gigantic storage facility.
Storage City.
Yeah, absolutely. And I could not agree with Ms. Raffa more about, that that was probably one of the prettiest, most prime commercial pieces of property in Lower Currituck that could have had something really nice on it, and we have the storage facilities. And, and I've talked to you about it when it started going up. I was curious as to what kind of development it was, and then when I found out the storage facilities. So, could you at least comment on that?
In Currituck County, just to be candid, we have about 4,000 acres, give or take a few acres, of land on the corridor on Kerituck Highway that is owned general business. Of that 4,000 acres owned GB, most of it is not commercial or is even undeveloped. So, what you've had in the past is, with that amount of GB, and in the old ordinance, we, we allowed industrial uses, a lot of limited or light industrial uses in the GB zoning. So, that's why you see a lot, especially in Lower Currituck, the reason you see a lot of industrial-type buildings on the corridor, is that, that was what the zoning allowed at that time. Our current ordinance addresses that to a certain extent, because in the future, while we still allow a lot of uses in GB, we've curbed some of the industrial uses, and we now have some, some very basic architectural standards to kind of make sure that it doesn't look like a storage city, so to speak. So, again, that, that particular, actually, all, all the self-storage you see in, in Lower Currituck was permitted under the old UDO. So, we've tried to address that to a certain extent, and we'll see how effective that is moving forward.
Well, maybe to get to the point, maybe we need to take another hard look at it before we wait till the next one comes, and then we're backing up, looking at it, and say, well, maybe it didn't work like we thought it would. So, unless the board doesn't want him to, I think that we should at least give that another hard look.
I have a question.
I agree.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Was it, was it permitted by right?
Yes.
All right. Was the new UDO in place when it was permitted?
No.
Okay, well, then that goes back to your point.
Yeah, just want to, going forward, we've, part of the, the thrust behind the rewrite of the UDO was those metal buildings in Lower Currituck and how to clean that up some, and, and maybe we need to take another hard look at it to make sure that that, in actuality, is going to happen going forward. Maybe staff can do some analysis and get it back to us so that we can have a look at it again.
I would agree. I would agree, Mr. Chairman.
Something we could do is maybe ta, take that site and kind of redesign it or plug it in under the new UDO and just see what the differences would be. Maybe bring back a site plan, how, you know how it is today, and bring back one that shows how, how it would be under the new UDO. I think that's a great way to see what the differences really are.
You could have the discussion based on what it actually looks like.
Right.
Unless the board objects, I guess we would ask you to do that. Does anyone object? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Raffa. Ms. Barbara Snowden.
My name is Barbara Snowden and I live at 154 Courthouse Road. Chairman, Commissioners, since we've been talking about two flags over Currituck, I decided that I needed to give you an update after the event has taken place. We tried to look at some numbers and some things to let you know how successful the event was. On Friday, because of the rain, we only had 547 students. That's a lot, even on a rainy day. On Saturday and Sunday, it is estimated, and this is a guess because we had three sites, that we had over 1,000 people show up in Currituck for the event. We had 40-plus reenactors. We had 47 volunteers, and those volunteers, for the most part, worked both days. Some of them worked all three days, some of them worked two out of the three. We had visitors, a family from Oregon who stayed over four hours with us. We had a group who came from Pennsylvania who were following Civil War events. We had a group from Richmond, plus the people that we had from northeastern North Carolina. We had people from McQuimmons, from Elizabeth City, from Edenton. In fact, one of our volunteers was from Edenton because she likes volunteering at events like this. So, we can say that it was a very successful event. One of my favorite things is a number of groomsmen who had a wedding the next day. The groomess called me two weeks before the event, and he and his groomsmen spent the day with me before their wedding rehearsal in Chesapeake, the day, the next day. So, it was a very successful event. Couple things I would like to tell you. One, the question that I got asked most often was not a Civil War question. It was, can we go into the courthouse? Can we see that building? So, I'd like to end, since we have finished an event and it's been very successful, I would like to suggest to you, you and I know this building is open many, many times, but there are a lot of people in the county have never been through this building and would like to know about the history and what goes on in this building. So, possibly, that would be a possible project, Mr. Scanlon, to have some kind of public event that would showcase this jewel of a historic building. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Anyone have any questions?
Well, thank you very much.
Ms. Snowden, thank you. It was, I did get a chance to interact with some of the people that were here, and it's a lot of dedication on that rainy day on Friday.
It was, and a lot of children.
Yeah. Yeah. Next, Eugene White.
Good evening to y'all. My name is Eugene White. I reside at 1041 Ballahack Road, Chesapeake, Virginia. I'm a farmer and a landowner, though, off of Backwoods Road. I have a farm over there. At the last meeting, there was some discussion that took place over concerns over the minor subdivision of land for development, and also the posting of water bonds for land that's greater than a mile from the existing water mains. And, and I'm involved with both, to be frank with you. I'm not a developer, I'm a farmer and a landowner, so I wanted to share my story and tell you about a success story also as a part of this. In 1983, my father bought the land that's involved off of Backwoods Road. In 2000, he passed. In 2001, I struck a deal with IRS to be able to keep it. There was a lien filed in the courthouse right across the way for 10 years. I shared this with you just to let you know, I'm not a speculator. The land has been in my family, I've got sweat and blood in it. But I'm at the point in my life, I'm 56-years-old, I would like to make some changes in my operation. And so, I consulted the planning department, Mr. Woody and his group, in the early spring about what were my options. And let me tell you what a breath of fresh air that is. I have dealt with City of Chesapeake and some of the other localities here, and his, his group, and particularly, Mr. Woody, have been more than helpful with me, guiding me through the process. Again, I'm not a developer. So, my options wound up being that if I wanted, I could take a minor subdivision of the land, five lots, with, as long as you have enough road frontage, and sell those, which is what I did. Now, as selling those as the landowner, the farmer, I reaped the benefit of that land. Those lots were the, where the, that's where the most value was right now. So, I took that and was able to accomplish part of what I like to do in changing my operation. Now, let me tell you something, farming, anybody that's been involved with it knows there's good years and there's bad. There's been a lot of family farms saved by having the option to sell a few lots, not your entire parcel. And believe me, I struggled with even selling what I have done. Selling your land, there's no going back. It's like eating your seed corn, right? So, I've done that. I'm at the point now where I would like to entertain all that I've got on the remaining portion of that parcel that can be developed. The water bond issue right now is devaluing the land to the point where I don't think I want to sell it unless I can get some relaxation on that. The, the benefit of having flexibility, being able to do a minor subdivision is not just mine. For instance, the buyer of what I sold was a young builder, not a developer. A young man trying to get a start in life, building houses, is the one that, that came in at the high bid on my land and bought it. So, I just would, I request that as you go forward here, looking at some of these issues, I know they're not on tonight's agenda, as I understand, there'll be some meetings in the future, just keep in mind, a couple of things I would, I would ask out of yet, that I've shared with you. I know that your job is hard, and I don't envy you. You have to try to make a balance between controlled growth, which we've seen what happens in this area when you don't put some thought into it. But I'd just ask that you'd also try to balance it out with landowner rights and some of the things I've shared with you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, Josh Bass.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Josh Bass, President of the Currituck Chamber of Commerce, and I come before you this evening to talk to you about a program that the Currituck Chamber is doing with prescription discount cards. We have entered and have started providing free prescription discount cards to anybody and everybody, Currituck, surrounding areas that is interested. They are available at local Chamber businesses that are participating, at the Chamber office. They can go onto our Facebook page or website and find out about it. These prescription discount cards offer a discount of up to 85% off of both brand name and generic prescriptions. And again, they're available free of charge. This is something that we wanted to do for the community. They're available at over 58,000 pharmacies nationwide, and there are no health restrictions, obligations, or limits on prescriptions. And there, we have both English and Spanish versions as well. And the Extension Department has been very helpful in getting these out to people, as well as the food banks. But we do want some help in spreading the word about these and making sure that the community is utilizing this that we are offering. So, again, anybody that you know that may need a prescription discount card, they're free of charge. If, we're hearing good things about them, that they're working well for people who are using them. They seem to work best for people that don't have insurance, but, you know, anybody that would be interested, we would certainly be happy to give them a card and let them try it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bass. And if they want to contact you, or just contact the Chamber, or?
Yes, they can contact the Chamber at 453-9497, and of course, that's area code 252, so just give us a call.
Thank you, sir. That's everyone I had sign up for public comment. I do want to ask the county manager one question before I close it. I've received a email from a constituent who was very disturbed that the county was forcing the sheriff to take over the animal control and the operations of the shelter. I'm not aware of such plan. Is there a plan where, that she has been instructed she had to take over the animal control? And, well, she already does animal control, but the operations of the shelter?
No, sir, there is not. There is conversations about exploring several different options of operating the shelter when it's built, and she's been a willing participant in those conversations.
So, she has not been required?
No, sir, she has not.
Okay.
I'd like to follow up on that. Does the Board of Commissioners have the authority to direct her to take over anything?
No, you do not.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I'll close the public hearing, we'll move to, or, public comments, we'll move to our first public hearing. Item A is consideration and action of connecting Corolla. I believe Ms. Holly White is going to present that. Good evening.
Glad to be with you guys tonight and be able to share connecting Corolla with you, which has been a year, about a year, year and a half-long effort by the planning department to take a look at Corolla and better understand how people are moving and how to move them safely to destinations in Corolla. This is in response to your request to, to take a closer look, and that was back in late summer. Is this TV? Okay.
It's working.
Okay. I can't see it down here. So, this was in late summer, 2012, that we received direction from you as a board to move forward with, with exploring how to, to better move people and how to get them to our beach and sound accesses. And I think that the pictures, the pictures speak for themselves, and I was just going to show you as far as understanding the safety concerns of the area and the need for doing this project. Thank you, Ben. There are just people everywhere in the summertime. These were taken on random days, not at the same time. So, we have lots of people with lots of stuff, also trying to get down to the beach access, but they're directly competing with cars and bikes. Here's a picture of Corolla Light near Whalehead Club, and just mass amount of, massive amounts of people trying to cross the road from one side to the other, trying to get there safely. At our beach accesses, people are using bikes a lot, and they're just all over the place. So, we wanted to try to improve the aesthetics of the neighborhood and give them somewhere to put their bikes when they, when they ride it there and just be a better neighbor. Again, you can see we've got children coming off the beach with lots of stuff, carts, coolers, and lots of traffic, and people crossing Highway 12 directly in front of that traffic. So, I think that, that just shows you best why, why the need was and why you guys asked us to take a closer, to take a closer look at that. So, our next step was to do some fieldwork or existing conditions in the fall, fall of last year, and we took a look at what's on the ground. What are our existing sidewalks and multi-use paths, both public and private? Where are people moving from their houses to, where are they going? The destinations that they might be traveling to. We looked at maps and we created new maps. The next phase we moved into was our stakeholder interviews, and that ran from January to June, and we did about 20 stakeholder interviews during that period of time. That was homeowner associations, businesses, property management companies. We just wanted to hear from them, how can the county partner with you to better move people, and where do you feel that the improvements are needed? We began to hear some consistent messages from those interviews and developed some findings. So, we spent the summer going out and counting cars and better understanding where people are parking, which accesses that they're using, and we wanted to kind of test those findings out and make sure that we were headed down the right track. Then, late summer, we started developing a plan, and we did some more public input and have, are here for you tonight to look at approval of this plan. So, out of all of our existing conditions analysis, out of all our stakeholder interviews, these are the findings that you see before you that we heard consistently from everyone that we spoke with about moving people in Corolla. Most subdivisions have access, direct access to the water. Monterey Shores and Currituck Club are the only two in Corolla that do not have direct ocean access. I think that there may have been a perception beforehand that we had day trippers that were using these beach access lots. But in our field, field study and field verification phase, we found that no one that was using the Whalehead lots that we interviewed was day tripping up to Corolla for the day. These were all people that were already renting and visiting in the area and just trying to, either coming from Monterey Shores maybe to the Whalehead lots. The majority of users of the Southern Beach Access appear to be the Currituck Club, and maybe there's just other people using our access by Whalehead Club, just so they don't have to haul all their stuff so far to the beach. So, it was more of a, out of need of using that access just for ease of use to the beach. Everyone unanimously said any accessibility was important. There seems to be a growing trend, and the Randall Study reinforces this, and looking back over the recommendations from the Randall Study, that the age of our population that's visiting and the reasons that they're coming here, so for weddings and family-type events, there seems to be this need to get our people who are disabled or elderly to the beach for these events that we're now offering, or just in general because it's an older population. The other important factor was clean, clean beaches. Everyone consistently said, the reason people come here is because of our natural resource, and we need to take care of it. We also heard, we need more bathroom facilities. We don't want to have to walk seven, six, seven rows back from Whalehead up to the, back to the house. Is there any way that we can have more bathroom facilities? We need to improve and take care of our current facilities. We need maps, better maps, so to show where there are existing bike paths, just to kind of educate people where they can ride in order to be safe. And people were interested in public transportation and leaving their car at the house and moving beyond their subdivision to commercial and cultural destinations in the area.
Wow, interesting goal.
Okay, so the goals, the goals of our plan that we, that we developed out of the stakeholder interviews, the existing conditions, and the findings, the number-one goal was safety. We need to better connect people more safely to our destinations, and we need to make that, improve like mobility for all the user types, so for joggers, for bikers, for walkers, for families with the little carts behind them with the bikes. And we need to do that to our destinations. So, that would be our natural destinations like our sound and beach accesses, our cultural destinations like the Lighthouse and Whalehead Club Heritage Park area, and to our commercial destinations, our shops and restaurants. And hopefully, by doing all of those things, that we're going to encourage this really unique sense of place that people will want to come back and unique sense of place, um, that people will want to come back and visit again and again to Corolla, that, that, you know, we'll be known for, to come to Corolla and leave your car and get to know, get to know it by foot. Some of our best assets are our natural resources, and getting people out on, by foot and bike really give them a chance to, uh, connect intimately with the natural environment surrounding them. And talking with the public, um, everybody seems really excited about this plan, and they want to know, "Well, when can we start these improvements?" Or, "Can we get them done? Can we get some of them done by next season?" And, um, so this is a result, this slide is a result of that. And that just is a general timeline for what we can expect, um, the timeline to implement some of these projects. So generally, from the time that we receive direction from you as a board or the manager, if there's a grant involved, that could be anywhere from six to 12 months from the time that we apply. That's from the time we apply to the time we receive the funding and are authorized to move forward with construction. Next phase would be to design the project, to have community input and to permit it, and that could take anywhere from three to six months. And this is, um, based on the complexity of the project. We would then bid and award the, award the project. That would be three to four months. Construction could again be one to eight months depending upon the complexity, and hopefully then we could have something, uh, finished product that every, everyone could be proud of. And all of that has to be centered around our tourist season. So we want to avoid major construction along Highway 12 and the adjacent areas from May to, um, late May to early September. So out of all this, we've developed 40 projects that are in the plan in a spreadsheet, and nine of those are multi-use paths. The nine multi-use paths, we are estimating, um, there, we've done this project, the multi-use paths in the past, we were easily able to come up with a round figure, so it's approximately $800,000 per mile, um, to, linear mile to do these paths with a total of 8.8 million to do the nine multi-use path project improvements. You'll also see on the screen, um, that there are a list of other projects there, and that includes beach access improvements, and that would be at, um, Wellhead, public accesses, and the Southern Beach Access Point. Parking lot improvements, and that would also be at Wellhead, and, and that would be the connection between, we have public parking, and so improving those lots, um, to make it more desirable or easier to get to the public beach accesses. And that ties directly to our next one, which is sidewalk improvements. Some of these parking lots to the beach accesses don't have pedestrian connectivity. People are walking down the road. We want to look at tying those things together and making it safer for people to get to the beach. Bathhouse, we are doing a bathhouse, um, project, or that's in, in design right now, and we're applying for a grant, and that would be at the corner of Corolla Village Road and Highway 12. Sound access, in Corolla, um, in Currituck County on the beach as a whole, we have two, um, sound access points in 22 miles of shoreline. And so it's an underutilized resource that we have available to us. As you heard earlier in your work session, there's a lot of master planning going on at the Wellhead Club and Heritage Park, and we want to piggyback on that and partner with them to, um, open up that sound front and make it more accessible, um, for people to get down close to the water and to enjoy that resource. Public transportation, we just want to explore, um, public transportation like a study and it, the feasibility of doing that. Signage, we would be looking at wayfinding, um, so how to orient people to destinations, and that would be both for vehicular wayfinding as well as for, um, pedestrian wayfinding, and that's two different, two different types. And of course, safety, um, safety signage, crosswalks, signalized traffic lights. It would explore all those in those 40 projects.
Holly?
Yes, sir.
So some of the costs that we were, were associated with our earlier session is included in this already as it was being discussed in there earlier?
Correct. We're both showing these as, um, and just trying to reinforce, reinforce each other's plans. We're both showing them as projects. If grant funding is available, depending upon the source and the type, they may have better availability, availability to apply than we would, but having them in a documented plan that's adopted by the Board of Commissioners gives it, um, a greater chance of being funded by a grant agency.
I understand, but I asked a question specifically about cost, and it was said it was being applied within this, this scenario of connecting Corolla, connecting Corolla and the?
I don't think any of the projects that's in the connecting Corolla and the cost that Holly's talking about is not in the presentation and the cost that you heard earlier at your work session.
Okay.
They complement each other, but they are separate.
That was my question.
Yes. And there's also, and I was going to hit on this at the end, but there's connecting Corolla, um, there's also, they kept referring to the small area plan. So there was a Corolla Village Small Area Plan that was done, and as a result of that, a study was initiated in the Corolla Village area, um, to specifically look at how to address this safety problem, pedestrian car conflict, wayfinding, better access to the water in Corolla Village. So there is a third project, um, kind of working on the same issue in Corolla. There's a lot happening there right now. We, as a group, uh, group of staff sat down to prioritize these, um, 40 projects, and we, and, um, most, from most important to least important, these were the things that we looked at to help us prioritize our projects. We looked at public safety. Does this project help, uh, improve public safety or address a need, public safety need? Is there a need or public benefit to doing this project? Does this project interconnect, um, existing infrastructure, either public or private, and does it, uh, connect it to the surrounding area, any type of destination? Is there a cost benefit to doing the project or to not doing it? And are there constraints that would completely prevent us from, um, implementing this project? We're going to take a quick look at, um, this is our multi-use path that ranked the highest as far as, um, need, and, uh, this runs from Food Line to Harris Teeter, and this is approximately 1.9 miles. It would be on the east side of Highway 12, and we would work within the DOT right-of-way. The approximate cost of that would be 1.5 million. And this is, uh, just pictures of the area taken this summer that just kind of demonstrate again the need for doing this. This is, um, the intersection at the Food Line Shopping Center looking south. Timbuktu would be on your right. While we were out taking pictures, we had a family, um, child on the, the guy with the child on the back, and they proceeded across the road in this area. The speed limit here is 45, and most of the people in this area are traveling along an extended shoulder that's about two foot wide. So that's just a brief look at our number one, um, project for multi-use paths. We've been kind of through, I've given you a, a overall. Do you guys have any questions, specific questions about any of their other projects at this time?
I don't have any questions. I just have a comment. I'm confused. I mean, we, we sit in there and we listen about the way it is and stuff, and we talked about the synergies between connecting Corolla and the efforts that was going on here, the efforts that was going on there, and you ask a question about the funding and it's two separate deals. If we sit and we approve the plan, and, and as you said in there, we're talking about competing funding, and, and there was an exception taken to that, as you remember, that, well, we, we consider it as, we're all working in the same direction. But the bottom line is, if you approve one set of plans and all the funding that's available goes to that, well, you might as well take the rest of them and throw it out to the bay getting baffled. So, to me, I mean, just, and maybe I'm missing something, but to me, we need to have a picture of the overall deal so we can make some decisions based on the overall deal. If not, we're, we're going to pick or choose. If we've got three different initiatives going on, enough money to fund half of one, well, then, we're going to fund half of one, and the other two and a half are going to be out of the window. Am I missing something?
Well, I, I think the comment was made, um, at the work session, that all three of the plans that you're looking at certainly support each other and are compatible. Taken collaboratively, they, they are going to paint a picture of all of the Corolla area. And one of the things that staff has talked about is, if you adopt this plan tonight, and if, as you move forward and approve the Heritage Park Plan, we will put them all together and assimilate them into a single master plan that would represent the Corolla area.
But that answers my question.
But the costs that you're seeing are individual of each other. So the board will end up ultimately having to prioritize, the various projects in each of the plans will have to be prioritized so that as you have money available, uh, you, you move and pick apart, uh, each of the items.
You answered my question. Thank you very much. That clarifies it for me. I just, I wasn't seeing that piece of it, and I was wondering when it was all going to come together.
Thank you. Okay.
All right. Anyone else have any questions for Ms. White?
Oh.
Yes?
One, one more piece of it that I haven't really talked with you guys about, and, and I'll wrap it up.
Well, I know, but you were trying to get questions on this part, so I didn't know if we had any more. Okay?
Perfect. Thank you. The last part of the plan is the policies and actions, which, um, are probably going to come into play when you guys see development applications that come through in the Corolla area. So we've included some policies and actions that are going to help, um, encourage, um, this interconnectivity. It's going to specifically look at, uh, development and having private investment help achieve some of these long-term goals that we're setting. So we're hoping that these policies and actions will guide future growth and development, and that they will help to implement the goals and actions that we've listed in our plan, and that it will be used by our staff to find consistency with, um, development plans that come through and used by you as a board as well. So just a few definitions and moving through the next few slides. That's, uh, policies, the definition of policies and actions. Policies are our broad brushing, um, large, overall, overarching positions that are, um, used by the staff and you as a board to make recommendations on development applications. The actions are actually our work plan, how we're going to accomplish the policies and the vision, um, in the plan. And so over the next 10 years, these actions will become the staff's individual work plans, and that could be, um, amending the UDO to incorporate some type of regulatory change. It could be undergoing a study, a further study of the area. It could be, um, implementing some type of infrastructure, constructing a, um, project or infrastructure piece. These are the general, um, policy areas that we were looking at, and this would be on, on page 23 of, of the PDF document from online, if you want to take a, take a look at that. We are looking at partnerships, so, uh, our, um, continued working together as a group of Wellhead Club and the Audubon, and this ties into what we heard tonight about what's happening at the master planning for Wellhead Club to continue to work with those people. We're committing to doing that. ADA accessibility, that was a finding we heard. We want to, um, encourage ADA accessibility and, uh, that private development should do that as well. Interconnection, design and safety, all those three things are linked together, and so through the design of projects, we hope to better address interconnection, um, to existing infrastructure and planned infrastructure, as well as to better address, um, the safety of the user. We want to develop some education outreach programs regarding safety. Maintenance, we want to build facilities and maintain them in a way that reflects, um, the value of the private investment nearby. And wayfinding, we want to better orient cars and people. So we've developed the policies and actions around, around these things. I've got a couple of policies here just to give you an example of, um, what we're looking at doing. This would be policy CC2. So we want to ensure that facilities planned and developed are universally acceptable to all users and comply with ADA standards. And update existing facilities when renovations are undertaken to be compliant with the ADA standards. So that's our overarching policy statement and the action, so the, the staff's work plan, uh, as this gets, um, adopted, would be to develop a list of our county facilities and outline what improvements would be need to better, um, bring them into ADA compliance and the costs associated with doing those, so that you as a board can consider, um, the costs associated with, with undertaking those improvements. Another policy that we're looking at is, uh, ensure that all development plans and constructs for infrastructure to connect, and again, this is all about connecting destinations, connects infrastructure to existing or planned projects. So the action to that would be to recommend that we actually formally adopt in our UDO, recognize this as a, um, adopted plan. And then the second part of that would, um, to amend the UDO to require, uh, or incorporate standards that would require development to, to connect to existing or planned infrastructure. The last policy we're going to take a look at, um, is CC10, and, um, we would look at supporting development and maintenance of public facility that represent and reflect the level of investment and value of private investment in the community. So we want to, we want to build nice facilities and take care of our facilities in a way, um, that's comparable to the investment that already exists in Corolla. We would, uh, the action to that would be to conduct a study, um, that we can incorporate into the capital improvement plan and identify what our maintenance needs, staffing needs, so that we can adequately maintain and take care of the facilities in Corolla. Also think as an action to that, that it would be important to design in a way that's sort of reflective of our coastal architecture and coastal environment. So in closing, um, and this gets at what, um, Mr. Avlet said earlier, we've got a lot of planning efforts going on right now in Corolla. There's, um, this connecting Corolla plan that's happening. There's the Corolla Village Small Area Study that's going on. There's the Wellhead Master Plan, and there's also, later on your agenda tonight, the Admiral Regional Bike Plan. All these emphasize bike and ped and, um, the uniqueness of the area and, and Corolla as a destination. And you may be seeing this come back before you later, once we finish up some of these documents, that we need to come back and make a few tweaks to make this all consistent based on the findings of other, other studies or plans. And as a whole, I think that the, the findings that we came to as a, um, staff are consistent with the findings that we had already heard from in our Randall Study, and I just thought I'd mention that. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
All right. Questions? Yes, sir.
Um, you started this project when?
Uh, summer of 2012.
Which was over a year ago.
Yes.
Uh, we had an accident in Corolla last year, and we got a lot of phone calls, a lot of emails. So this was in the works when that happened.
Correct. This was initiated prior to all that occurring.
So we, we didn't react. We were already acting.
Yes.
And I may, want to make sure that I understand right. With public safety being our number one concern, number one, for the people that want to come here, they're protected and their safety is very important. I think you had said tonight that the first project was the multi-use path between Food Line and Harris Teeter.
Yes.
With the, that, that picture right there speaks volumes to me. And as far as what Mr. Scanlon is saying, as far as priorities go, when I see a picture like that, safety for our visitors is priority one. So, and I want to say that from the things I've heard, I know some people that live in Corolla, good job to you, to Ben and your staff. They're thrilled to death. So thank you very much for what you do.
Anyone else?
I'd also just make a comment. I was with you, Holly, when you were down at the Corolla Civic Association, when you presented this to, um, that group, and you got outstanding kudos for this project, and I want to echo that again, that you and Jenny did a tremendous job on, on this project and, and your photography, your, you know, capturing all the information that was necessary. Great job on this.
Thank you.
Holly? Give us a timeframe. I believe you said 10 years. Is that, uh, realistic to getting all these different projects done, do you think?
I think it would probably more, be more, and that's probably a better question for our county manager, but 15 to, 15 to 20 in actuality, knowing the amount of public investment that this will take to implement all the projects.
Thank you.
If I, if I remember correctly, some of it would have already been accomplished some years back if, uh, hadn't been some major changes.
Yes, sir. We would have had a, uh, a lot of it done. The bike paths would have been done, the, uh,
Public transportation?
Yes. Trolley system would have been there, and, uh, it got changed.
Anyone else? At, at this time, I'm going to open the public hearing because we do have to take action. I have no one that signed up for it. Is there anyone that wishes to speak to this item? Hearing none, I'm going to, yes, ma'am?
The only thing I would like to say about that is,
Please, please come to the microphone.
The only thing I would like to say about that is they still have to drive through the corridor to get there.
Mm-hmm.
There we go again. What an embarrassment. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask the board for a motion, understanding that this isn't committing the funds. This is just approving the plan, and then the funds will be committed as they've become available.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for approval.
Have a motion for approval. Second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is public hearing in action on PB 13-22, Currituck County, request to amend the Unified Development Ordin- to amend the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 2, Administration to Revise Standards Relating to the Board of Adjustments So That They Are Consistent with the North Carolina General Statutes. Mr. McCree or Mr.?
I don't think Mr. Woody's presenting that as a UDO text amendment.
This is not nearly as exciting as bike paths and stuff like that, but we'll do a little Board of Adjustment here for a minute.
Spice it up a little bit.
It's hard to spice up Board of Adjustment.
Okay.
Sessional law, 2013, 126, House Bill 276 brought forward a number of changes to the general statute that governs boards of adjustments. I think the county attorney would, actually I think our county attorney worked on that partially, but I think he would agree and I do as well, those were good changes. It was long overdue and it makes some sense out of some of the antiquated rules that were in the statutes, so it's a positive thing. There were a couple of changes after discussing with Ike that we felt like we needed to put in our ordinance to be consistent with that state statute. I'm going to go through those really quickly. Number one is the statute says that if you receive a letter of determination or a violation from the county, we must provide 30 days for that party, for the aggrieved party to file an appeal. In the past, we've given 10 or 15 days for appeal, but now we'll have to give a 30-day appeal period. Now that's interesting because we could still, the county can still send a notice of violation, ask for the violation to be corrected in say 15 days, especially if it's something reasonable. Could even start initiating fines after the 15th day, but they still have 30 days to file the appeal. So it doesn't necessarily mean we can't correct violations in an expeditious manner, it just means the appeal deadline is longer, which is probably a good thing, not a bad thing. That's included in the text amendments. We had to modify the findings of fact. The commissioners that have been on the board for a long time, they remember this, that the Board of Adjustment, the first finding they have to make is that there can be, in order to approve the variance, there can be no other reasonable use of land. That is next to an impossible finding if you take that quite literally, because there's always a reasonable use of land. It could be growing corn, for example. So that finding has basically been struck and it's been restructured to really focus on hardships on the land related to location, size, topography. So it gives a little more, I think, leeway in how you apply the findings in granting a variance, but it still can't be a personal circumstance, it's still got to be some factual reason, but it does, I think, make that a little more reasonable in the application of it. That's included in this amendment. And the last thing is that when the Board of Adjustment hears an appeal, so that would be if the county administrator, myself or my staff, if we sent a notice of violation or if we wrote a letter of determination, took a position on a policy or ordinance and an appeal was filed, it used to be that to overturn the appeal, it required a four-fifth vote. It required four out of five board members to overturn the staff. That's now been changed to a simple majority. So that means that basically it could be three out of five. So it's a little easier, it's a little easier to win an appeal, I guess, or overturn a letter of determination. Those are the three primary changes that we incorporated, the language is in the packet. I don't know if Ike, if you have anything you want to add on this?
No, I guess I just again would note that this kind of came out of a zoning and land use planning section of the North Carolina Bar Association. A number of land use attorneys recognizing that there are a lot of inconsistencies across the state as to how different towns and cities and counties would provide for their Board of Adjustment matters. This bill that was adopted by the General Assembly also placed into the general statute or codified case law that has developed over many years, decisions of the Court of Appeals and the North Carolina Supreme Court, to finally put it into the general statutes, although it was already law that we had to comply with, it now has been put into the general statutes rather than just having to rely upon it as a decision of a court. So those are the reasons why the General Assembly adopted this legislation unanimously in both houses of the General Assembly, I might note, and why now we, like many other counties and cities and towns in the state, would be going through the same exercise to make our zoning ordinances conform with the new state law.
And staff recommends approval of this and the planning board also recommended approval.
All right, any questions for Mr. Woody? Hearing none, I'm going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to this? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. I do have a question before we, at our, I guess it was our last meeting, we were talking about the difficulty sometimes of a property that's condemned. And I think we discussed that at one point, you said the Board of Adjustments would not hear those appeals, but then I think Mr. Idlet brought up about one in Corova. And I've been thinking about that. I believe it was a trailer?
Yep.
That the walls had fallen in or the floor had fallen, something had, floor had fallen out of it and the county took action against it. They appealed it to the Board of Adjustments. Were you here when that happened?
I was. I believe that was on the White Ayers Estate, is that right?
What happened finally with that?
It was removed.
It was finally removed?
To build a small building there.
Okay.
So I understand.
Right.
I hadn't been up and looked at it, but that's what I was told happened.
Okay. But that
Yeah, those appeals do go to the Board of Adjustment.
Okay.
It's kind of unusual, I guess, in a way, because I don't know if the Board of Adjustment are really authorities on condemnations necessarily, but I don't know. Ike, is that in our code of ordinances or, you kind of caught me off guard, so I'm not sure.
It would be in our code of ordinances, that's where our minimum housing ordinance is located.
Okay. Nothing else? Any other questions? We have a motion for approval.
So moved.
Have a motion for approval. Second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item is we have our tax assessor, Tracy Sample, here to do a presentation on present use value assessment. I have been contacted by a couple of people who have their property in the present use program as done by the state and I asked Mr. Sample to please come forward tonight and explain it a little better for the general public as well as for the board.
Thanks for having me this evening.
And he's already violated the 13-slide rule. Go ahead, Mr. Sample. Thank you.
I am going to skip some of these slides.
Yeah, yes, in large print. Thank you.
The present use value, what is present use value? It's a voluntary program that provides for the ownership of agricultural land, horticultural land and forest land. It gives its preferential tax treatment if the owner and the property both qualify under certain requirements by state law. Generally, all property in North Carolina is valued at its market value and that's the value, the price of property would sell for between a financially willing, financially able buyer and a willing seller, neither being under compulsion to sell or buy. The present use value, on the other hand, is the value of the land at its current use, its current use for agricultural, horticultural or forestry purposes, based solely on its Present use value is usually less than the market value and the difference in taxes that one pays between the market value, whatever is based on the market value and the use value is called deferred taxes. When land becomes to qualify from the present use value, the owner must pay three years plus the current in those deferred taxes, including interest when it no longer qualifies. I'll get this clicker right in a minute.
Happened when somebody disqualified?
Oh, yes. We'll get to different reasons why you qualify. Say you sell the property and they stop farming it, they put it in a food line. Okay, they collected deferred taxes for three years plus the current. The different properties that can qualify is agricultural land, which is engaged in the commercial production of growing of crops, plants or animals, horticultural property engaged in the commercial production of growing of fruits, vegetables, nursery of floral products and forest land and actively engaged in commercial growing of trees. In order to qualify for the special use value assessment, the present use value assessment, there's four tests. There's the ownership test, a size test, an income requirement and it has to be in sound The owner has to be an individual or it can be a business entity such as an LLC, a corporation, a partnership, if the principal business of that business entity is agricultural, horticultural or forestry. And all the members in that business entity are actually, when you get down to who they are, they're individuals and they're all actively engaged in that business or they're married to someone who's engaged in that business. For example, if a father puts his property into a family LLC and deeds it to he and his children and their wives, they're all going to qualify because they eventually get down to their individuals and they're all actively engaged or they're related to someone who is. There's a size requirement. For agricultural purposes, you have to have at least one tract that's 10 acres in size as the natural production. For horticultural land, it's five acres in actual production. Forest land, you must have 20 acres in actual production.
So by state statute?
State statute, yes, sir.
Has to be contiguous, that 10 acres is
Yes. You can have two 10-acre tracts side by side. The case law, they said one time, if you can take a pencil and draw all around it without having to pick your pencil up, you count that as one tract. So it can be two 10-acre tracts or a seven and a five if they're contiguous and you have one of those, it must meet those requirements. Now, under the farm unit concept, once you have that one tract that qualifies, say you have a 50-acre farm in one place, down the road a mile, you have a five-acre piece of farmland. You can qualify that, but you must have that one tract that meets the minimum requirements to begin with. Then you can qualify the other tracts as long as they meet the following requirements, in the same ownership, same classification, in the same county or within 50 miles of the qualifying tract. And again, they have to be actively in production and under sound management. There's an income requirement for agricultural and horticultural. It has to at least average $1,000 a year for the last three years. Forestry land, there's no income requirement because typically you don't have income maybe for 20, 25, 30, 40 years.
Tracy, quick.
Yes, sir.
The $1,000, is that just for the 10 acres or for the whole tract?
That is for the qualifying tract. The first tract, it could be 10, 20 acres, it at least has to have a thousand.
Personal has to generate $1,000 worth of income.
Right, that qualifying tract. That smaller tract you may have down the road, may not, it doesn't have to meet the income requirement as long as it's actively in production and under sound management. The different, the income that you can count towards that income requirement is from the sale of products or animals produced on the land or any payments received under government, soil conservation land retirement program. There are certain incomes that you may get from the land that you can't qualify, such as it doesn't allow you to qualify or doesn't help you qualify, is the rent from that land, stud fees, grading fees, boarding fees, training or showing of animals for judging or shows, money you may receive for leasing the hunting rights or sale of firewood, pine cones, pine shawl, et cetera. The reason stud fees, grazing fees, boarding fees, things of that nature because boarding of animals is not a qualifying condition. A lot of people say, oh, I've got 20 acres and I've got three horses out there. Well, unless you're raising those horses for sale, you don't qualify. If you just have horses that you ride or you board for other people, that's not a use that qualifies you for use value.
I'll bet they go for sale pretty quick.
The last test is the sound management. It's just, sound management is just a program designed to obtain the greatest net return from the land, consistent with its conservation and long-term improvement. If you're meeting the income requirement, more than likely you're going to be under sound management. The big question is the present use values, the actual values that is placed on the property of tax purposes, what are they and where they come from? The present use values are based solely on the value of the land and its current use as agricultural land, horticultural land and forest land and its ability to produce income for that use, which I think I went over earlier. I have a list of eight or nine or 10 slides here that went into detail how the department revenue comes up with those values. I'm going to skip those, they're pretty boring. I think I can sum it up and that department revenue conducts rent studies for farmland and analyzes net income from the sale of timber and they capitalize those incomes based on capitalization rates which are mandated by the general statutes of North Carolina. Department revenue then distributes a land use manual to each county and it has the values which we are to use. I'm going to skip a few of these slides and get to the actual values that we're using.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Do I understand this, various soils are judged in different ways?
Yes, sir. Soils produce crops at different levels, so the rents is going to indicate that. The ones that produce
So if I have a swamp land, it's going to be judged different than a prime piece of 土地?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. This slide I'm showing you now, it's broken down into four classes and those soils fit into those different classes based on their rents. Same thing with forestry. Forestry grows trees at different rates. It has six different classes for forestry soils. So if you have the best soils in the county that grow the best crops, it's going to be Class 1 and the value is $1,200 an acre.
And who does that calculating?
The department revenue gives us a manual that has these values in it and they are adopted at the time we do our revaluation.
Where do you get your soil from?
Pardon?
Where are you getting your soil, the class of the soil?
The soil maps that
Mike Docsey, county house?
Well, I think the state has done. They classified all the soils in the county. If you go online and look at GIS, you can hit overlay and see exactly what the soils are.
Have we found those to be consistent with actually what's on the ground? Or has any studies ever been done to validate that? Just curious.
I don't know.
Don't know.
They come up with these soils from somewhere. They've had soil manuals for 30 years anyway and they've gone through different versions. Maybe that's the question, maybe
Two gentlemen behind you can answer, I'm sure.
The highest class of Class 1 soils, the best soils, at $1,200 and that's the maximum that we can value under use value is by statute, it can't be above $1,200. If they do their analysis of the rent study and they cap it at the rate that they have to use, if it comes out at $1,500 or $2,000 an acre, $1,200 is the highest it can be for taxation.
Is there an appeals process that a farmer can say, I don't think this is Class 2 or Class 1? What is there, how can they challenge that?
He can come in and talk with me. He can ultimately appeal to the Board of Equilization Review if he doesn't feel his soil. If he disagrees with what the soil survey says, it's a canita soil, which is actually, I think it's a Class 3 soil. But if he thinks it should be something else, that's something we can look at, he can appeal.
I guess, Tracy, what I was trying to get at is this is not something you just arbitrarily say, this is $1,200 soil or this is 990. There is a specific formula that you have to follow to validate what value you put on that land.
Actually, the state has done that for us and they give us this manual with the recommended values. And back when we had, when we went through the revaluation, we adopted two scheduled values, one for our market value and one for the use, present use value. I submitted two scheduled values to you. And the values that I submitted to you were exactly taken dollar for dollar from the manual that the state suggested.
Okay.
And again, they look at the rent studies and they have to use, and I skipped those slides, but they have to use a cap rate between say 6% and 7% to figure out those values and I think they're using 6.5%. For forest land, it's a 9% cap they have to use. So they give us those values, that's what we use.
Gotcha.
So the top soil is 1,200, Class 2 is 990, Class 3, 740 and Class 4 is really a non-productive soil if it happens to be like marshland or a sand dune or something, it's in that $400 class. And forest land is 265, 200. We don't have any soils in Class 3 and 4, but Class 5 is $45 and Class 6 is 40. And I will show you compared to what that was in 2005, our previous assessment. There was no, I'll just go here. The Class 1 soil, there was no change. It was at the max it could be, it was $1,200. They recommended $1,200 again this year. For Class 2, for agricultural and horticultural soils, it actually went down $20 an acre or a 1% drop. Class 3 soils did go up $65 an acre or a 9% increase. I will say that there's only two soils in the county that meet, is in the Class 3, that's the Bojack soil and the Canita soil. I'm not sure what Bojack is. Canita is a real sandy soil. I know that that one's a sandy soil. And if you'll notice, all the forestry values went down between 25 and 39%. And if you'll notice, all the forestry values went down between 25 and 39%. Here's the calculation of a property that's in land use. It's a 52 acre tract on a shortcut road, has a market value of 397,400, about $7,500 an acre is what the assessment is and it sold for about that same figure earlier this year. The present, the present use value on that property is 56,000, a little over $1,000 an acre. So this, the regular taxes on this property would be $1,927, but it's in the use value program, so the owner is paying $271.79. What's deferred each year is that 6,000, excuse me, $1,655. That's been deferred some time down the road, it no longer qualifies. We collect that, the difference for that for three years plus the current, so basically four years. This tract sold to a farmer, so he is going to continue it in the program. We don't collect it now. As long as he, if he comes in and makes a new application, he can continue it into the program. When the property is removed from the present use program, either voluntarily or because of disqualified event, the deferred taxes are collected for three years plus interest. Here's an example, this is that same parcel, shows the deferred taxes in the middle of $1,655. We add the interest to it all the way over on the right, gives a total of what he would have to pay. The total taxes we collect at the time of sale, $6,600 and then another $900 in interest. And this is assuming the same tax rate for the next three years.
What is the interest rate?
It's, for the first month, it's 2% and then it's 3/4 of a percent thereafter.
Monthly?
Monthly. Yeah. And the example there, it shows what it is for the first month and then the number of months. Of course, we have computers that figure it for us, but if I manually had to do it, I could go to this chart and do it. And this particular example, it disqualified in November, so we're collecting through November of 2016. Some of the reasons the property may no longer qualify is the owner may voluntarily ask to have it come out of the program. Maybe he's going to leave it to somebody or sell it or give it away and wants everything to be cleared up before then, he could take it out, come in, pay the deferred taxes and be done. It could qualify to a non-re relative, someone who does not qualify for continued use. Say if they sell it to Walmart to build a store, sell it to a church, he's going to build a church on it later, those taxes would become due because the new owner would not He could sell it to an owner that would qualify but fails to come in and file an application and accept a deferred liability, it would come out of the program then. They could transfer a relative who fails to file an application. If it fails to meet the minimum income requirement, say at the time he made the application, he met the income requirement for whatever reason, it failed below that, it could come out of the program. We, I haven't seen that happen, but it could happen. If they fail to maintain the sufficient acreage in production, he had, he had his 10 acres when he qualified, but for some reason he had, he had a 15 acre tract and he decided, well, I'm going to take 10 acres of that and board horses. He's no longer going to have 10 acres that qualifies, it would come out of the program. He'd pay the deferred taxes. Or if he, if he sells 10 acres of that 15 acre tract, he now only has five acres left, he no longer qualifies. And if he had other smaller tracts tied to that farm, they would come do too because they would no longer qualify because he doesn't have the one 10 acre tract in agricultural land to qualify. To get in the use value programs, the application process, there's two types of applications. One, the initial application, it's not in the program now, come in, he gives me his income, tells me how many acres, what he's grown on the property, and that's the initial application. Now, if he buys property or they buy property, it's already programmed, there's another application where he comes in and say, I'm going to continue to farm this, we accept the deferred liability and we go from there. The initial applications are due during the listing period, which is January through February 15th. We will accept them early, of course, but they're supposed to be in by February 15th or if there's a value change, if we change the value of that property for whatever reason, it opens that window for another 30 days for him to get an, get his application filed. And applications can be attained at my office, go onto our website, call our office, we'll send them one, go online, our website, the department revenue has a website as well. Any questions?
Do we have any questions of Mr. Sample? I think you did a good job of explaining it. Now, the state determines the deferred use value on an annual basis, semi-annual or periodically or?
It's for the revaluation cycle. So, because we adopted those schedules that-
So this will stay the same for the next eight years unless we revalue before then?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir. Do you want to say something, Mr. West?
I can.
Just please tell everybody who you are, where you live.
My name is Manley Young West and I live at 2658 Carritoque Highway. And we've been talking back to Civil War. I live on a farm that's been in our family since that Civil War and it's been in constant cultivation. I approached a couple of you about after the reevaluation that we had in the county and I'll just voice my concern because as I looked into it and I talked to Tracy about it, it's based on soil types and it is set by general statute and the most that it can be is $1,200 an acre and that is by general statute. But a lot of people may think that farmer's getting a good deal because he's getting all this deferred tax, but for the most part, farmland is not costing the taxpayers of the county any money for it. There's no law protection, there's no forest or fire protection for the most part. Occasionally, you'll have some wheat fields that get burned off and you may have to call a fire department, but that's, that's on a rare case. But my concern was when we went through the reevaluation, my property decreased in fair market value 66.7%, but my actual tax that I had to pay to the county increased by 53%. Well, that got my attention, whenever your taxes go up 50%. So what has happened, the, while the fair market value has changed, the value that the farmer is paying under land use has not changed. It hasn't changed since 2005, as Tracy pointed out. And I went back and looked and all the way back to 1989, which that class one was $917 in 1989, but from 2005 to 2013, it has not changed. And so that's, that was my concern. We've got retired farmers, we've got widow women that are base their income on their rents from their farm and now all of a sudden, anybody that's under land use, their taxes went up 50% because the rate that you assess the county went from 32 cent to 48 and a half percent. So there's where your 50% increase came into play. So that's, I don't know how to fix it because the values are set by the state, but the rates are set by you, so.
Mr. West, what did you say your assessed value dropped what percent?
My fair market value of the property after the tax reassessment went down 66.7%.
I don't understand it, I just-
Well, that's, I didn't either, but that's, I got my tax card-
And your taxes went up, how much percentage?
53%. The actual amount of money that I paid because, see, my value that I'm paying on did not change. The fair market value changed, but the $1,200 stayed the same. That hadn't changed since 2005. So that did not change, but the rate that I was paying on changed.
I understand. I mean, I don't understand, but so, but because-
He was, value was $1,200 when it was 32 cent per hundred.
Exactly.
Now it's $1,200 at 48.5 per hundred.
But his, his, his value of the property fell 66%.
That's the fair market value.
Fair market value.
Which is not considered.
That's not what he's being taxed on. He's being taxed on the deferred use of $1,200. He was taxed on it in 2005 at 32 cent per acre at $1,200 an acre. Now in 2013, he's being taxed at 48 and a half at $1,200 an acre.
So the fair market value really doesn't have any consideration at all in determining what he's paying?
Fair market value to the farmer really is not an important issue because he's not after selling it.
Gotcha. I mean, you've already indicated that you don't know what the fix is and I don't, the way it's set up, I don't know what the fix would be or how to address-
Only fix would be the tax rate. I mean, you can't, because this general statute assesses and that committee, there's a whole list of people that are on that committee, Farm Bureau, NRCS, Department of Ag, there's a whole group of people that are on that committee that set these values based on, as Tracy pointed out, the production of that land and the soil type of that land. You have best soils, average soils, poor soils.
But the values of the soil would be, or are set by the state, is that correct?
Yes.
So-
By this board.
So the only avenue to address this, notwithstanding the state having them change the value of the soils, would be the tax rate. Now, as the county, is there any mechanism where the county can change tax rates for different properties?
You cannot.
You did that and before 2005, the tax rate was 64 cent per hundred dollars. So if he'd have been at $1,200 at that point, it would have been 64 cent applied to the $1,200 per acre. In 2005, the board cut the tax rate to 32 cent, from 64 to 32. Well, we know what happened four years ago, the bottom fell out with real estate values. The state law requires the revale every eight years and it just so happened the revale came when the real estate market was down and that's why we're at 48 and a half percent. The county's not collecting any more money-
Right.
-than what it was collecting before the revale.
Right.
There's not any new expenditures from, from money. It's the same money we were collecting, it's just a rate change so that you continue to have the schools, the fire and rescue.
You basically shifted, you basically shifted who you're collecting, that $26 million that you operate on.
That's correct and-
We, we, we didn't shift it. We did not shift it. The economy shifted it.
Well, that's-
Yeah, cause-
Values and the economy shifted. We didn't shift anything.
But you did when you increased the rate.
If you would have cut major services if you didn't increase, I mean, my taxes personally went up $750, just my residence.
Yep.
I mean, which is, which is minor, but I actually had Mr. Sample reevaluate my commercial property and I gave the county $3,500 more this year.
I think-
I mean, I feel your pain on it.
It, you know, I know we all got to pay taxes, you know, we, that's part of living in a democracy, but when your taxes go up 50%, that gets you attention.
Right.
And, and my, here again, my concern is people that are living on their rents, their farm rents. There's a lot of people in this county that are depending on that rent and when they have, when their taxes go up 50%, that's a chunk.
Well, what you said is absolutely right. For the last eight years, the people on the Outer Banks were paying-
65%.
The bulk of the revenues and then when-
Well, they were paying 32, they were paying 32 cent on the hundred, but they were paying it based on fair market value.
Yeah, their, their values were way higher and then when we just reviled, their values went in the toilet. And then over here, some of it, in Moayak, I think they actually had an increase in some, a lot of their values, probably up through the courthouse and then as you move south, it kind of went, went down overall the values and-
Under the same scenario though, eight years ago, like Mr. O'Neil said, if the $1,200 is a constant deal, you, you received quite a reduction in tax when it went from 60-
What year?
Eight years ago.
2005. I think you said in 89, it was like 900 and-
For whatever reason, because I've, I bought a piece of property in between and all, but my taxes in 2005 were $2,000 more in 2005. But I didn't, I own, I did not own the same tracts of land I've purchased since then, but my taxes in-
If the value was 1,200-
I'm sorry, I told you wrong. The value, the property values in 2005 versus, we'll say, 2013 because we were, we're in that now, they changed $2,000. The actual amount of money that I paid in taxes was about a $150 difference between 2005 and 2013.
Sadly, what, sadly is all this is dictated by the general statutes and Camden County and Pasco Tank are going to be doing their revale. I think they're working on it right now and, and they're right now at, I think, what's Camden, at 60 cent maybe, 50, high 50s, Pasco Tanks at 80. If it all works very similar, they're even going to see, possibly could see more. I don't want that printed in the paper, I said there, but I'm just telling you that as, as the, the values change, you know, with the economy down and the values down, the rates have to go up to offset it and unfortunately, your $1,200 at 32 cent versus 48 was a, a large increase on, on you as a farmer.
Well, it was, it was everybody.
Yeah.
Everybody that uses land use value.
Right.
Not just the farmer, but anybody that's land use.
Right.
It went up 50%.
That's, that's true.
Okay. I just wanted to, I don't think there's any fix to it.
I was just getting ready to say, I'm not sure what kind of remedy, but I am glad that Mr. Sample came for educational purposes for, for us as, as well as some in the general public that may not understand it.
In talking to you and some others, I, I don't think you realized the impact that it had on the land use part of it. You know, when you look at fair market value, you might say, well, gee, it didn't go up that much or actually, as you said earlier, on the, on the Outer Banks, it actually went down, but that's, doesn't have a part on land use.
Right.
So, thank you.
Well, just to, just to, I have a gentleman from the Outer Banks, we talk about how theirs went down. Now, his did not, his went up and got a very nasty letter and went through the whole deal and tried to show him exactly what took place and Tracy and Dan done a very good job of doing that. But I mean, just because theirs dropped everywhere, it don't mean that they're paying less taxes.
Well, and I'd add, I've talked to Tracy about it and, you know, I, I understand it. I just wanted y'all to be aware of how it affects in real life and Tracy's been real nice about answering my questions.
Right, and I do want to say, if anyone has any questions about this, they can contact Mr. Sample's office at 232-3005, correct?
That's correct.
232-3005.
And I think I was going to follow up on one of the-
Yeah. Tracy Sample.
I was going to follow up on one-
Tax Department.
Call him at any time.
I can follow up on one of the issues, Ray. They're talking about the $1,200 has been that way for, for many, many years. Based on the, the tax rate, 62 cents per hundred dollars at $1,200 value, the taxes was $7.44 an acre. When we had the revaluation eight years ago, the tax rate dropped to 32. Those taxes went from 7.44 down to $3.84.
Significant decrease.
So a good drop. Now, that's been pushed back up to $5.82. So it went from 7.44 down to 3.84, back up to 5.82. It, it does affect, because those values don't change, so the, the change in the rate does affect it tremendously, but I just wanted to give you a kind of picture of what's happened over the last 16 years with that.
Good, good.
That was a very good presentation. We appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Next, new business is regional bike plan presentation and adoption. I guess Ms. White? Yeah, you, you better make Ben let you have some time off.
It's all about biking ped tonight, guys. So the plan that you have before you tonight is the Alamo Regional Bike Plan, Bicycle Plan. So what we just looked at was connecting Corolla, which was bicycle pedestrian, wayfinding and access. So it was a little bit more in-depth. This is really geared only towards the bicycle, the user, that particular user. So this plan represents, was started, I guess, last summer, 2012 also, so about a year and a half of work. This was funded through NCDOT and our Alamo Regional RPO oversaw kind of implementing this and this is a regional planning document, so it encompassed 10 counties and Coeur d'Alene County was just a participant and a part in this planning effort, giving feedback and we have projects that are recommended for improvement in this plan. Alta Greenway was the consultant that did this plan for the state. This is just an overview of their planning process, so from summer of 2012 to the current time. Um- time. They did an existing conditions analysis, they did public involvement, they drafted up some findings or proposals for a bicycle network, how to interconnect, interconnect infrastructure. They have some bicycle design guidelines, and then how to implement this, implement this plan. In addition to, the only other thing I thought I'd bring your attention to is Task 10, which is branding, logo, and signage. And they're gonna work on a regional signage system. So, in addition, here in Currituck, we're gonna be working on a, like for Corolla, an individual wayfinding system for Corolla. But at points in time, there's like a recommendation this plan would be to have a signed bike route in Corolla, and we would also have maybe regional, this Albemarle Regional signage. So, that gives us a little greater publicity throughout the state than just locally. There was quite a bit of public involvement that went into this effort. They had a project website page, Facebook page. They visited Seafood Festival in the Outer Banks, some events happening in Lisba City, Columbia, different areas throughout the region. And their plan structure is similar to what you guys are used to seeing, existing conditions, needs assessment, projects, policies, actions, and how we implement it. This is just a picture of the study, the planned study area. This is the 10 county region, so they broke it up into north of the sound, projects that would be considered north of the sound, projects south of the sound, and projects along the Outer Banks. Please stop me if you have any questions. Their goals that you see listed are in red, so they wanted to improve the quality of bicycling conditions in the region as a whole. And these first four, four goals that you see kinda all deal with connections, improving connections between destinations and how people move, kinda the same, same idea as the last plan we just looked at. So, they wanna improve health outcomes in the region, improve the safety, increase bicycling trips, get people on bike more often. And they want to promote and encourage that tourism, that cyclist-based tourism. So, hopefully by doing all those things, that they're gonna increase the number of visitors that come to the area that are on their bike and can see the area by bike. And again, this, this plan is not just for Corolla, but this is for all of Currituck County, and the recommendation, there are project recommendations that are on mainland, mainland Currituck. We hope that, staff hopes and sees that in addition to the goals listed in the plan, we'll be able to utilize their project-specific recommendations in our small area planning projects that we're working on. Also, they have some additional tools where they've come up with typical cross-sections for projects that we'll be able to use. And it also has a whole section on grant funding, how to fund these projects. And I think that can be used even beyond the projects in the plan. This is just kind of an interesting slide. They kinda break down the users, the typical cyclist users. So, you have the strong and the fearless, which are your Lance Armstrongs and your 1% of the population they're trying to serve. You have your enthused and confident, so 5% to 10% of the population, interested but concerned, which is the largest majority, 60%, and no way, no how. So, these are the user types that we break down, and the facilities are designed to address these user types. They did an existing condition analysis, and I think what's important and emphasized here is that it is such a broad region. We have from the beach area all the way into very natural, non-developed areas with cities in between, all, sandwiched in between all of that. So, there's an extensive amount of existing conditions analysis that have gone in and was needed in order to develop recommendations for this plan. Another important piece of existing conditions that they did was the crash data. And you can see the map of Currituck and the crash data associated with that. I took a peek a little bit more closely, and over the last 10 years, there's been only 10 fatalities for bike and pedestrian combined over the course of the last 10 years, and that was from 1998 to 2010, the last 12 years.
Ms. White, may I?
Sure.
I noticed on, one of these showed the intersection of Barco, 158, 168, that there were two incidents right there. One was a fatality that existed that they had put on the map here. And do they have any proposals, you know, where you have these incidents, that they will do something different to the roadway or anything?
Yes, as part, not in necessarily reaction to a specific incident or occurrence, but I think overall, they're looking at improvements. And that's, that's what I'm, it's a great segue into what I'm gonna look at right now, which is their recommendations. These are their regional recommendations. But on the mainland itself, they're looking at a separated, like a separated shoulder for Poplar Branch, Tolls Creek, they call it a buffered bike lane. So, there would be some small amount of separation in between the road and the path itself. And so, you know, those are areas that are on our mainland that are heavily traveled by vehicles that would get people off the road. They're also looking, so the maps on the right depict the areas on the mainland, so Moayok, Maple Barco, and Grandy. They're looking at paved shoulders, multi-use paths, and buffered bike lanes. And the paved shoulders are shown by the orange dotted lines, multi-use paths are shown by the green dotted lines. And the buffered bike lane is shown in blue, and that's on your bottom map in this slide, kinda the very top of the map, and that's Poplar Branch area. This was their criteria that they used to rank projects. Again, it all gets back to their ranking, the first five you have there are all about connections, and do they connect to specific destinations, schools, commercial areas, residential areas? They wanna improve that. The last part, the last two next to the last two are about public input. So, these were the things that were important to them in ranking our projects. There were two demonstration projects from Currituck shown in the plan, and I thought that I'd point these out. One was in Moayok, and they're looking at doing a buffered bike lane through what would be considered old, old Moayok, or the, kinda the main street area of Moayok by the elementary school. And they're also looking at, that's shown by kinda the purplish-gray line on the map. They're also calling out a multi-use path along Highway 158 in the map, and also a multi-use trail that would wrap around behind the school. Over in Corolla, this is, they're looking at doing a signed, a signed bike route. And so, they would, the cyclists would use the roadbed itself, and all that would be needing to be done was to improve wayfinding signage in this area. So, the last step is implementation, and that's what we're in right now. All the agencies or municipalities in this region that have participated in this are having their boards adopt, adopt these plans. That's the last phase of this. Following this, we're gonna, there'll be a committee established, a regional committee to ongoing communication between county staff to talk about concerns, bicycling concerns in the region. I think overall, what this plan does for the county is to give us, when grant funding becomes available, again, we're listing projects out that are important, they're in a prioritized plan, and they give us greater chances of receiving grant funding when the opportunity does become available. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Go ahead. I wanna make sure I understand this, or I think I do. This is all through grant funding here?
Yeah, the plan itself was done through grant funding available, made available by NCDOT.
But when they're built, it'll be done through grant funding?
Not necessarily. The, they've listed out, this is a planning document, they've listed out and studied the area and given recommendations on how to improve bicycling safety and connectivity in the area. And it basically becomes, it becomes up to the community to determine how these projects are implemented. It could be through grant funding or other, other public-private partnerships or other funding mechanisms.
All right. The reason I'm going, because you just did a presentation about safety in the connecting Corolla.
Specific to Corolla.
This is totally separate?
This is a different planning document altogether that was put together by our Albemarle Rural Planning Organization and through NCDOT. This was done by Alta Greenways.
I guess where I'm going with this, this is another project that, that needs to be funded, along with what we, what you did 30 minutes ago. So, now we've got a second choice.
This is the fourth project.
Well, I'm just talking about what she's got, what she did.
Most of the projects that are listed in this, the proposed, are already, for connecting Corolla is a much deeper look into Corolla itself. What's different about this is that there are mainland projects called out in this, in this plan. So, this covers...
It's still competing in the same dollar.
Correct.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Thank you.
Holly, any idea ballpark figure as to what we're looking at, dollars for everything other than Corolla, that you're talking about in this bicycle, mainland, Outer Banks?
I haven't looked through to tally up, and I'm not sure what the total cost of improvement for the...
I won't hold you to it, just the ballpark.
I'm not even certain. I would have to look back at each project. I haven't looked at the costs for each project proposed, but I'd be glad to get, email that to you guys, make that available.
I'll keep that, one more question.
Yes, sir.
Did you say you also had a path that would, if this were, if this moves forward, for the people in Moayok, they'll have a path around the elementary school that they can...
They had several different recommendations listed. I mean, again, this is a plan, a plan that they've initiated. It's not to say that what's been recommended couldn't be different if the community was opposed to this. There is a, kinda in your top right corner, it shows a multi-use path that goes around the school.
But if people in Moayok wanted to go for a walk, they could use this path, and it would give them a safe path.
Correct. You have two, three different avenues to bike or walk in the area, based on this.
Thank you.
If I may, Holly, I served on the RPO board for several years, and the main bike path was actually designated by the Town of Duck as the Heritage Park Bike Path, which would connect the Whalehead Club to Duck's bike path. And that's what they had pursued. And so, I think probably we will see if the state, where they have started to refund the way roads are built and bike paths and everything, that may or may not be built. And it may, if they do build it, will take a lot of burden off of, you know, our own needs here in Currituck to build it.
All right. Now, Mr. Scanlon, I'm now on the RPO board. So, would this project, this bike path, compete with other road projects, or is this a separate category?
If it's being submitted for NCDOT funding, it would compete. It would compete.
There you go.
Along with everything else.
Resurfacing a new project, aviation project, but all mode of transportation now will compete against each other for funding.
13 counties.
Yes, sir.
Be careful if you buy an expensive pair of jogging shoes, that might compete too.
I'll say again what I said earlier. All the road funding and repairs and maintenance that we were used to getting are no longer gonna be in eastern, northeastern North Carolina. But in Charlotte, Mecklenburg, and Wake, you will see new bike paths, you will see much new roads and construction.
I would comment, though, in the prioritization process, being part of a regional plan or a plan will help you score better.
Right.
So, by the board adopting the connecting Corolla and by adopting this, although it's still a long way to go to compete, it will help you if your project is in a comprehensive plan versus one that is not.
How about if we tie a bridge to it and put it right in there? Make that part of the motion. Yeah.
I just have one comment. I mean, we've listened to three or four different competing interests. I just hope that we keep our eye on the ball, and don't let these things get out here. And out here, we've got the Moayok Small Area Plan going on, that's looking at connectivity and looking at different things in Moayok, and walking, and paths, and parks. I mean, all of these things are interconnected, intertwined, and we don't do any, out of any good for us to look at them on separate pieces. We need to have all this stuff coordinated, in a coordinated effort, where we can look at it, not everything at one time, but rate and rank things piece by piece as we go along, do what makes sense in whatever area it comes from, and move forward. That's, you're gonna eat this elephant, this elephant, you're gonna eat it one bite at a time. You're not gonna swallow it whole. So, that's just my comments, and I'll just hush at that.
I'd be honest to add to that, I think Ben's done a good job with tying Holly's talents into all of these projects, because she has a, you know, a piece of all of this that she's working on. So, there's some, some common denominators there with having Holly a part of it.
Anyone else?
Just one comment. The workshop we had tonight, the various projects that we've had presented to us, all of them are, are grading a tremendous amount of work, but trying to get my arms around it, I think we just looked at a way to spend 40, 50, 60 millions of dollars. Where's it gonna come from?
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, it's overwhelming to me.
I mean, doing no more than we have done over the last couple of years, we still, the tax, being revenue neutral, tax rate's going up 32 to 48. And now, we're looking at projects that could conceivably, I mean, I don't, that's why I was asking, just a general idea about just the bike paths over on the mainland. But we're looking at tens of millions of dollars in additional funding. I just asked a question, where's, where does it come from? I mean, I don't expect an answer, because it's a rhetorical question.
Mr. Graves, that relates to exactly what my point was.
Well, I think the good, the good part about this, these plans that we're all undertaking that seem to be all culminating at this point is that there are a lot of existing and potential, you know, these are solutions to problems that exist out there, and we're not gonna solve them all tomorrow or next year. And this just gives you guys a framework, a work plan, to easily look at each budget year and figure out how you're gonna, to do that slowly and incrementally over the, over the next 15 to 20 years.
Again, nothing that's been presented tonight has...
It's funding, it's just planning.
Been funded. It's planning. It may be stuff 20 years from now, somebody does. We're just looking at the plans. And staff has done what the board had asked them to do, was to present the plans, and that's all we're looking at. And there is no money to fund this stuff. So, before anybody gets excited, there is no money to fund it. We're just looking at the plan. With that, this is, we have a resolution to support the regional concept of the bicycle plan that is put forth by the RPO, which is governed by the North Carolina Department of Transportation, which has put this plan forward. So, I have a motion to adopt.
So moved, sir.
Second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing on all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Item B, consideration and action of an ordinance of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners, amending Chapter 2, Article 2, Division 2, Rules of Procedure, amending Chapter 2, Article 3, Division 1, to provide for Advisory Board Terms and Meeting Attendance, amending Chapter 2, Article 3, by repealing Division 2 Airport Advisory Board and Division 3 Economic Development Advisory Board, and amending Chapter 2, Article 3, by adding a new Division 3 Economic Development Advisory Board. So, somebody's gonna have to tell me what I just read.
Could you read that again?
Like, you're in a journal assembly.
I think everybody would like to know what that...
We lost you after three.
Mr. Chairman, this ordinance, ordinance arises out of your recent work session, where the board identified that, in particular relative to its boards and commissions, you wanted to have, first of all, all boards and commissions of the county use the same rules of procedure that you use, to the extent that it's practicable for that, those respective boards and commissions. You also determined... You also determined that you want to make clear that persons would need to attend a meeting and be physically present at the meeting in order to participate and vote in that meeting. To also provide that a person is expected and required to attend at least a certain number of meetings in a twelve-month period, or their seat would be vacated. To make clear that terms to all your boards and commissions would be two-year terms. And then lastly, to repeal the Airport Advisory Board and Economic Development Commission, or another way of saying that is to merge the two into one board, so that one board would have the mission that two previously had. So with that, I'll go quickly through the amendments. On page 249 of your agenda, we'll start at line 24, which amends Section 2-51 of the Boards of Commissioners' Rules of Procedure to provide that all your boards, authorities, and commissions will use the same rules of procedure that the Board of Commissioners uses, except you will see there are certain exceptions, because some of those accepted sections really would only relate to the Board of Commissioners and your functions and how you organize yourself annually. Going on down to line 27, Section 2-52, we just add and make clear that your authorities, boards, and commissions are to comply with the same open meeting law requirements as they already are, but this is just to make it clear within your rules that that expectation goes forward. They are to comply with the open meetings law and be open and transparent in the conduct of their business. Go down to page 251 of your agenda package, line 20, this is where there will be the addition of a requirement with regard to meeting attendance, that a board member must be physically present at a regular or special meeting to participate or vote in the meeting. This arises out of a debate that's gone on, I guess, in local government circles for a good number of years, as to whether a member of a body must be present in order to participate or vote in a meeting. Is that legal? The school of government has now kind of evolved over time to say, well, it might be possible if a board makes clear through the adoption of a policy that a member can be absent from the meeting room and participate by telephone. You have decided that you feel like it is important for a member of a board to be physically present and be able to participate with other members of the board in the same meeting room, and so that would be now the requirement. Going on down to line 29, and then over to the next two pages, that strikes out what was formerly in your Rules of Procedure since 1991 regarding the purpose that you may go into closed session. Back in 1991, when these rules were first adopted, there were about sixteen reasons why a board could go into closed session. That has, of course, over the twenty-some years now, been drastically reduced. And so if you go to page 253, beginning at line one, is now a new provision that conforms with the current status of the state law, that you may go into closed sessions only after adopting a resolution, and only for those purposes that may be provided by state law. And then as to certain closed sessions, where you have to add additional information in your motion, that is provided for in this particular rule as well. Let's see, the other highlight, going on to page 255, line 19, speaks to the board and how it makes appointments. You make different types of appointments. You make appointments of vacant elected offices. If a commissioner resigns, a sheriff resigns, a registrar deejays resigns, you would vote to make a replacement. But what is being added to this particular piece is to recognize that as to your boards and commissions and authorities that you appoint citizens to, that you will be utilizing the procedures set forth in Sections 2-96 and 2-97, the process that you normally use now was adopted several years ago. The next change, I want to point out, is if you go to page 259, line 23, amend Section -2100 of the Rules of, of the ordinance, that that's the part of the ordinance that relates to how you appoint your boards and commissions. This makes clear that, again, the terms of office for a person appointed to a board or commission of the county will be a two-year term. And again, to make clear as to those particular boards and commissions, a person must be physically present at the meeting in order to participate or vote in the meeting. And then lastly, that if they fail to attend three meetings in a twelve-month period of time without an excuse, then the seat of that individual will be declared vacant, and the Board of Commissioners will utilize your appointment process and the code of ordinances to appoint a successor. Went on down to Parts Three and Part Four, line 34 and 36 of this ordinance will repeal the ordinance that created the Airport Advisory Board and the Economic Development Board. And then continuing on down to Part Five, and going on over to page 260, is the creation of an Economic Development Advisory Board, again, that's the name we came up with. But most importantly, it changes the composition, or at least makes it now a seven-member board of citizens appointed by the Board of Commissioners. In addition, one member of the Board of Commissioners, the county manager, the president of the Currituck County Chamber of Commerce, or Designee, and a representative of the College of the Albemarle will be appointed by the Board of Commissioners to serve as ex officio members without a vote. I guess the next highlight for this particular ordinance is going down to line 27, Section 2-116 is created to provide for the duties of this board, which was to, which what happened here was, we took the language from the Airport Advisory Board and its duties and responsibilities, and language from the Economic Development Advisory Board ordinance and its duties and responsibilities, and put them together here, so that this board will now have the role, duty, and responsibility to do studies, and make recommendations, and analysis with regard to economic development matters in the county and the county's airport. And that is, that is the ordinance that's presented to you for your consideration and adoption.
All right, questions? I think the main thing was the consistency of rules of operation, so that everybody's operating under the same rules was one of the big issues.
Yes, I do want to point, the only, there was an exception, there is an exception to the boards and commissions that are to use your same rules of procedure, and that was a planning board and a board of adjustment, as we discussed at your work session, because of what they do and how they have to do it, your rules might not very well fit their regular process. The other thing to point out, particularly with regard to the Board of Adjustment, as I noted, this ordinance will provide that each board and commission member of the county will have a two-year term. There is language that says, except as may be otherwise required by North Carolina law. And that again is to, for example, to recognize a board of adjustment, which under state law, a board of adjustment member shall have a three-year term.
And you did put their eligibility for a second two-year appointment?
That's already in, that's already in an earlier ordinance that you adopted a couple of years ago.
All right. Any further questions? Mr. McCree? Guess this is just on for action?
It is on for action, does not require a public hearing, but at its first reading, if you were to adopt it tonight, it would require unanimous vote, or would have to come back for a second reading.
Okay.
Motion for approval.
Have a motion.
I'll second that motion.
Second. Any further discussion?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote in favor of this. I still have a problem with the teleconferencing or telecommuting stuff. I think in today's technology, and as today, as it is, I mean, people work from home all the time. I have an issue with that, but in the rest of the ordinance, I agree with, so I will vote in favor.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing on all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Next item is consent agenda.
Motion for approval.
I have a question about...
Yes, sir. I have a motion. Can we get a second so we can open it for discussion?
Second.
I have a second. Okay, Mr. Petry.
Approval of local firefighters relief fund boards. I don't know what that is.
Mr. Scanlon, tell you about that.
That is, excuse me, that is something that we do annually. There is funds that the local volunteer fire departments can get access to through the Department of Insurance. It does require them to appoint certain individuals that represent their interests, and there's also, if you look at the form, there's individuals that are appointed to represent the county's interest. It's something that historically we've done every year for the fire departments, but it gets them access to funding.
I just needed an explanation.
Requires our approval.
Per station. Yeah, so each station will have its own form with its members' appointments and county appointments to it.
Yep. Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Commissioners report. Mr. McCord?
Nothing to report.
Mr. Griggs?
Nothing to report.
Mr. Martin?
Nothing tonight.
Mr. Idlet?
Yeah, I have something. After the tax situation and as everything went down, I asked Mr. Scanlon to put together a list of what is funded out of the Avloren Tax Dollars that is taken in by this county. And he went up and done this listing for me and sent it to me. Out of that, three items in particular, I mean, and I know, we discussed, we looked at, across the board, thirty-two percent was of what we had to try to make up somewheres, or reduce. Out of that, schools EMS and the sheriff's department, it's $21 million out of a $47 million budget. So in essence, if we'd have done a thirty-two percent reduction, we'd have took $3 million out of our school systems to educate our kids. We'd have took $2 million out of our EMS system that provides EMS services to our community. We'd have took $2 million out of our sheriff's department, and a thirty-two percent reduction across the board for everything from social services to Board of Elections to staff, every staff office that is here. I mean, it was just, I don't have it up in front of me now, but just about thirty or about thirty different items that that funded. Parks and Recreation, I mean, just everything that deals with funding throughout across the county. And obviously, these are services that people want. I mean, I've asked numerous people, I've said, here's the list, folks, tell me what you don't want, tell me what to cut. Help me out. Show me what you want to cut out of this list that are Avloren Tax Funds. And most people said, well, no, we can't do that. We can't take $3 million out of our schools, for lord's sakes. I mean, you know, the Board of Education says we need more money, and the school systems need more money. Teachers are talking about hadn't had raises. I said, yeah, we have county employees that talks about hadn't had raises. So I mean, we totally, fully understand. I've got a tax increase, I pay more taxes, just like you guys do. I'm paying more. Everybody up here, I think, is. So we understand it. It was not fun to sit here, as I told a gentleman the other day. It certainly was not easy for me to sit there and vote my own self a tax increase, for lord's sake, much less you. But it is what it is. We can't help it. The economy is what it is. Everybody says, oh, you should have cut this, should have cut that, saved here, saved there. Come and look at the little, small things that take minute amounts of money that adds up to that other seventeen or eighteen or twenty million dollars. Guarantee you, you would have a fit if we cut them. Citizens of this county would have a fit if we'd done away with those services. So I don't know what else to say about it. You know, I'm tired of talking about the taxes. It's over with and done, personally, from my perspective. But I felt like I just had to say that one last time. Thank you, Mr. Scanlon, for putting all that information together for me. And it painted a picture that I really even did not understand myself. So with that being said, I have nothing else, Mr. Manager, I mean, Mr.
Mr. Idlet, I think if I'm not mistaken, to add, Valorem Tax, which is property tax, generates $27 million, is that correct, Mr. Scanlon?
Forty-seven, isn't it?
Twenty-six.
It's the twenty-six, twenty-seven million, right?
Twenty-seven. The rest of that money is from sales tax and other things. The actual property tax, that's forty-eight and a half cent, only it generates, I'll say twenty-seven. So you take twenty-one million from the twenty-seven, then you've got six million that's left over from the property tax.
My point being, there are services that are out there, that if people don't want them, sit down and look at them, ask Mr. Scanlon to send it to you, and say, well, we don't want this, we don't want that. And lord have mercy, I don't, I suspect, you know, we'll see where the majority goes. But from my perspective, everything that I looked at, and everywhere that I looked at ways to save money, with cutting this kind of money out of the funding that was going, that things are so important to running and managing the county, taking care of our kids, looking out for safety, looking out for emergency medical stuff, just was not there, folks, in my opinion. And that's just my opinion. Everybody has their own. But I would welcome anyone to look at it and help me out. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Petry?
I would like to say that I appreciate the efforts to clean up the corridor, but I've had phone calls from people that have trouble putting food on the table, much less painting their house. And I don't want to lose sight of the people in this county that are struggling. Our food pantry alone is doing nine hundred people a month. We're doing one hundred and thirty-eight children, elementary school kids, every week in backpack for kids. And I don't want to lose sight, because somebody's home might not be where it needs to be, and it's in the corridor. I appreciate the efforts to do that, but I want to make sure that we're affecting people's lives and their homes, and that's, I want to make sure, and I will go to my grave defending these people having to make do with what they got. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gilbert?
Yeah, I just want to remind everybody that we have a small area, Moyoc Small Area Meeting on Monday night, the 28th. Sorry, every Monday night, I'm scheduled something. It starts at 6:30, the Moyoc Library. It is a public meeting. You're welcome to come and listen to this committee as they work. At the end of that session, there is a public comment, so I encourage you, if you would like to come and make comments and get involved, please do. The other thing is, I want to note, my colleague here, Mr. Peachy's wearing a pink tie, and I am wearing a pink shirt, and Mr. Idlet's got some pink in his tie. But this month is October's Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and any of you that have someone that you love, encourage them to get their preventives. You know, ladies with their mammograms, men with your prostate exams, get your preventives done. It's very, very important to those that love you. So I just, I'm a big advocate of preventative medicine, and lots of things can be detected early on, so I encourage that.
Thank you. I have nothing. Mr. Scanlon, do you have anything?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
All right, the next agenda item is a closed session.
Mr. Chairman, I move to enter closed session pursuant to GS 143-318.11A3, to consult with the county attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege, and pursuant to GS 143-318.11A6, to discuss a personnel matter.
We have a motion?
Second.
Second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All right, we're now going into closed session.